I think we're caught up. We're just testing it right now.
What kind of was her platform?
They're out there.
That's 28, are on timed item. Got ready to go?
Good morning. Welcome to our scheduled meeting for this afternoon. Would you please stand and join me in the flag salute? Remain standing for a moment of silence. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the freedom of justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. The pleasurable opportunity to recognize the Tulare Union Girls Cross Country Team for winning Division Two Valley Championship. I'd like to turn this matter over to Mr. Vanderpoel, representing District Two.
I'm very proud today to be representing District Two. I'm proud every day, but especially proud today because of some outstanding young ladies that we have in the audience who actually went to my alma mater Tulare Union, class of 2002. That was me. So you guys are all probably classes of 2012 and on, but would you please stand right now so you could be recognized by the board for your accomplishments? Give them a round of applause. I have a little story here about what these girls did. I'm gonna go over this story very briefly, so I'll read a little synopsis of it, and then afterwards, I'd like you all to join me up here in the well for a few photographs. And I know Mr. McNatt and Jed are gonna be helping with that, so thank you very much. Basically, the journey towards the Tulare Union Cross Country Girls Valley Championship began back in May of 2009. They had a May meeting to discuss, this meeting was geared to recruit new girls and to lay out the goals for the upcoming season. The new recruits were few, but our goals were high. They went up to, Coach Andre Martinez went up to the whiteboard and wrote a large 20 on the chalkboard. He told the girls that if they really wanted to win a Valley Championship, the whole team must run a 5K in 20 minutes or less. And for those of you who don't know, 5K is an awful long distance to run. I found out it's a little more than three miles. And I did a 5K brain tumor walk in Southern California this past summer, and I walked it, and I was kinda tired, and I'm in pretty good shape. So you girls running it in less than 20 minutes, that's pretty amazing, so congratulations for that. The girls understood that the task at hand was very difficult, but none of them wanted to back down. They only had determination to succeed and achieve their goal. They wanted to begin training in mid-June, which was the earliest that the team had ever started, but that's what the captains wanted for the team and for the upcoming season. Basically, they went on and they won EYL championships, and then they went on to Valley Champion, the Valley Championships. And it says that their first time in the Valley Championship match came in at 20:01. That's one second over the goal, which is absolutely phenomenal. And again, that's just a long ways to go in that amount of time. Second place was in 20 minutes and 47 seconds. Third place was 20 minutes and 49 seconds. Fourth place was 20 minutes and 58 seconds, and fifth place was 21 minutes and 27 seconds. They beat all of the other teams in the division at the Valley Championships by a 70-point margin. They beat last year's team that won along the way. They were the first girls' cross-country team in the city of Tulare's history to win this championship. So congratulations for that, because the high schools in Tulare have been around for an awful long time, and you were the first to ever be able to do that. So again, much congratulations for that. Then the girls did it. They were the Valley Championships, and they do get their ring on February 18th. And I told them already that I was disappointed they didn't get the ring prior to that, because I would've liked to see it, you know, being the fact that I was in the ring market recently myself, so. I figured I would say that before Worthley had a chance to throw it somewhere in during the meeting. So if you'd please join me in the well for some photographs, and so I can present this proclamation to you, that would be great. What will be after? I'm just gonna real quick go over what this proclamation says. Basically, what this proclamation says is it's a proclamation signed by all five county supervisors, including yours truly. And we've all signed it. It's a proclamation honoring the Tulare Union High School Women's Cross Country Team as the 2009 Central Section Division Two Valley Champions. So again, congratulations. There's lots of whereas's and therefor's, and I won't read them all, and hopefully Andre will read them to you on the way home, on the bus or something. But again, congratulations. You've got all signatures, and you can hang this proudly in your classroom. So Andre, congratulations, and girls, again, congratulations. And maybe we can make this like a Super Bowl, and you can all just touch it. And then let Andre walk by, and you guys can all touch it or something, and maybe we'll make good love. I'll stand in the middle of you two guys. Girls, yeah.
You look pretty taller, Pete.
For one time in my life, I'm actually taller than the most. Thank you, girls, again. Congratulations. Keep up, keep up running hard, and running fast is healthy. You're never running from the folks that beat and bully you at the cap.
Thank you for being here today, ladies, and your coach. At this time, we have our public comment period. This is the time set aside for anyone wishing to address this within matters in our jurisdiction, but not on today's agenda. Please come forward, give us your name and address, and you have, we have a three-minute timer, 15 minutes allocated this time. I have Robert Montion as one who wants to speak this morning. Or afternoon, rather. Good afternoon, Mr. Montion.
You and I remember when our kids were kinda that age, huh? Coach soccer when we were, when they were five years old, and they're now 28. My name is Robert Montion. I live at 801 North Dickren Drive, Tulare, California. And I'm here for one reason, and that's to share with you a little bit. I've been a public official myself, actually, for the better part of a 30-year career. And having read the last newspaper, especially the picture of Mr. Cox with the picture that you had, that had been unfortunately doctored. But I have to say to you and then share with you that Harry Truman said it best when he said that if you can't stand the heat, get out of the kitchen. The public office brings with it some very difficult times and some very difficult criticism, but that has a foundation in the law. And that law is, was ratified, or actually was affirmed by the Supreme Court, New York Times versus Sullivan. And I bring this to you, and I even have copies for council and for all of you. But what it effectively says is that as public officials, when you walked into this job, you were subject to criticism, and you're subject to caustic, sometimes antagonistic criticism, and you have to take it. Have to take it, and you have to accept it. And many times, we need to take that. I, as a public official, have been criticized publicly. I have had death threats made against me. And, you know, it's never pleasant, but it's part of the job. And I ask you to consider that when people get laid off, it's a lot more than their feelings are hurt. Their lives are affected. And when you say that healthcare hasn't been impacted, I, a 30-year career in healthcare tells me totally different, Mr. Cox. Your healthcare system has been decimated. And maybe it's the state. Maybe it's you. Maybe it's something else. Maybe it's just the world we live in. But I'm here to say to you that as public officials, we sometimes get our feelings hurt. Sometimes we don't like what we hear. But that's, that's the job we took, and that's what, why we had, that's why you're here. Part of why you're here is you took, you made that choice. And I just wanna read one quote from the Supreme Court. Debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, and it may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials. People are frustrated, and right now, those attacks, those words may become particularly caustic. Take them for the value that they have in that they respect frustra, they represent frustration that people have. Thank you. Just wanted to share that.
Mr. Melvin, it looks like Zeeman. Simon?
My name, Mr. Chairman and Board, my name's Mal Zeeman, and I live at 6306 West Hurley. I've only been in this community since 1974. But I think we're going down the wrong direction when we're going to use a past ordinance tax, which is the road tax, to pay for something different than roads. And you may find that out real fast. I figure maybe 15% is going to be helped by that railroad. And we're talking about 85% that are affected with these roads. I can see a whole bunch of communities, and I wasn't here last week because I didn't want to interfere with mayors and everything. Once these roads go to pot, and we use the excuse that, well, there's a downturn in the economy, then they're not gonna listen to that. They want their potholes fixed. So I figure 15%, I was gonna go 90, but I think only about 15% is gonna benefit from that railroad. And it's not gonna make a profit for years. And if you think so, please buy some shares in it. And, you know, it would really be easy, and I'm not trying to pick on anybody, to have a poll through computer or a hotline and just say, will you want us to use road tax for a railroad? And see where we're at. I told Tom Porter in 1976 that I wouldn't run for city council, because I won't represent haves for have-nots. And I'm serious about this very much, and I have a lot of people that are talked to, and they all agree. If, you know, and geez, years ago, born and raised in Lodi, third-generation German, we had our friends out farming, and they were hauled off to Arkansas to interment camp. We had Italians, and, you know, Japanese, Chinese, we were in real terrible with people. We don't, can't do that now. We promised them to fix roads. There's another way to do this if we need to. There's another way to do this. All these people that wanna back that railroad, buy shares in it. This gentleman will be happy to sell shares. And I don't blame you. I would. I know what you're trying to do. I respect that. But the county's not gonna stand still for it. Thank you.
Mr. Zeeman, I'm glad you spoke to us. I do want to clarify one thing. The county is not proposing to buy anything of a railroad. There is a proposal before the Tulare County Association of Governments, of which each of us are members, but also the incorporated cities have members and are under a public members. That is the organization that you may want to address your comments to.
Well, no, I've got the impression we were gonna use road tax. Well, then I'm really wrong then. I'm really wrong, and I apologize. But I was, I was thinking this was gonna come out of the road tax. Because I'll guarantee you, there will be a whole tremendous bunch of changes. Because we as taxpayers and voters, which, man, at the age of 21, I voted for Eisenhower's second term, and he drafted me.
Thank you for being on the screen.
Well, one thing about it, I did get to shake his hand. In the next two years.
I have Mr. Lee, William Lee.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The board and about any audience. My name is William Lee. I'm with the Allensworth Development Group. I handed a package there. It's a personal service contract. I've actually was able to get high-speed rail considered for Tulare County. And the commission got that proposal you have there in the footprint of what we're typically doing in Allensworth, and bringing high-speed rail to Tulare County with the heavy maintenance facility there. That's a start. There's an upcoming 400-acre, which I will be bringing to you in the future, a 400-acre solar farm that's between Allensworth and Alpa. And negotiating with PG&E in reference to that and a few solar companies. And I'll be bringing that to you around the first of March for your approval for that to go forward. But the Allensworth Development Group is destined to try to bring some industry and jobs into the southern west end of Tulare County. And we do need your support in that manner. I need this personal service contract. I genitized, brought before you for that you could vote on it. I know you can't vote on it today. But if you could consider that for the meeting on the 16th, if it could be put on the agenda at that date, I'd appreciate it very much. Any questions?
I have no questions, except that to say, you appeared before the Tulare County Association of Governments with a similar, I was at that meeting where you spoke at that particular situation. And I'm not aware that the county is in, looking for, nor has the ability to contract out for the services you're offering. This is not something which, I mean, we will check with our, my CEO, our county administrative officer and so forth, but it's just not a matter of bringing it back and voting on this. We're not, you're asking us to do something which is not budgeted. It's not, not part of our current budget. I don't anticipate it being in next year's budget. We're in a difficult situation, and I don't. I think you may be at the wrong board again. I think you may want to make your presentation to the Tulare County Association of Governments. But I appreciate your comments today, and we'll be back in touch with you through the CEO's office as to whether or not this matter will be put on the agenda for the purposes of having a vote on hiring or retaining your services.
I can understand that. But there's, in economic development and also redevelopment, there were some monies that were slotted into that whole entire sphere that have never came about, and that shows up in your general plan.
I don't believe we have redevelopment agency area in Allensworth that I'm aware of.
I don't believe so.
We have existing redevelopment agency, redevelopment areas within the county, but Allensworth is not among them.
Oh, it was one of your plans that you planned it out to be a hamlet? I think you mentioned it in 1908 in that general plan.
A hamlet, we have a hamlet in our proposed general, general, I'm sorry, our general plan, but even so, we have hamlets. I'm familiar with one that lives, that's very close to where I live, in Sultana. It is also designated as a hamlet in the general plan, but it does not have a redevelopment agency.
Okay. Would you support my effort to American Recovery Act to ask for funds and funding for that side, that part of the county?
Well, I'm not gonna make a commitment to that today, but I know you brought that presentation to the TCAG, and I think, I believe it will be coming back to the TCAG board. All of us are members of that board, and that'll give us an opportunity to weigh in at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to address this this morning? I have no other names. Please give us your name and.
Philip Mattingway, Tulare. Address? Oh, what is it? I never get my mail there. 2693 Elsinore. I noticed that nobody basically talked about what was in the paper and the things that we've been looking at. And in a way, I'm kinda disappointed that nobody did it, or nobody has done it up to this point. But I think government's one of those situations where if we don't watch it, it runs away. If we don't watch it, it basically changes. If we don't watch it, it takes advantage of us. If we don't watch it, it, strange things happen. And the people that basically are our public servants, they're, they're just that, our servants. And when our public servants go out and they take advantage of us, and they go live off the high hog, we suffer. And in our county, as everybody knows, we probably have the, as far as economically, the lowest county in California. I'm just gonna give you an example of bad public, a bad public situation. Recently, I got a cell phone ticket. And two years ago, I kept hearing, that thing's gonna be $20. That thing's gonna be $20. That thing's gonna be $20. And I thought to myself, the officer said to me, okay, now this is gonna be $178, and I don't want you to be upset. And I said, what? And he said, well, I'm just gonna tell you right now. And I went, so I went to the traffic commissioner, and I said to him, and this doesn't have anything to do with you. It's just an example. Went to the traffic commissioner, and I said, this is wrong. What do I need to do to fight this ticket? And he said, well, you have to basically go in front of the judge, and if you can convince him, he'll let you off. But I can't. And I said, well, I wanna make a difference. So I set up an appointment, and then I did my research. And I talked to the office of the people who basically put this ticket out in the legislature. And I said, wasn't your intent to basically have these things cost $178? And they said, no. And people call their office all the time, and they're mad. And then I talked to the legislature, and then I talked to the highway patrol, then I talked to everybody, and then I basically tried to ask, where did all these 20, where did all these $20 little items come from? Well, Dinooba Hospital's getting a little bit. These guys are getting a little bit. These guys are getting a little bit. And nobody could tell me. So I took it in front of the judge, and I said, if you can't tell me, and I can't basically recall somebody for doing this, then I want you to basically charge me $20. And I brought him through the whole process of who I talked to. The people in the legislature told me that.
Your three minutes are up.
People in the legislature told me, you're getting ripped off. You need to talk to the Attorney General. But the bottom line here is this, just like that ticket, we have to basically watch you. We don't wanna watch you. We've got all kinds of other things to do than watch you. All I'm saying is, please take care of us. We don't have time to watch our public servants.
Anybody else wishing to speak this morning? If not, we will close the public comment period and bring up the board supervisors' matters. Mr. Ennis?
Yes, Supervisor Vanderpoel and I met with John Ferguson and Daniel Crawford last week. They're a company that wants to take a almond, a whole almond plant north of Rich Grove and turn it into a recycling plant for biomass and coal-powered generation. They take the waste products from these, and with that, they make products to stabilize pads and dairies, stabilize roads. It absorbs moisture on, on lots that people wanna enjoy, take the moisture out of and stuff. So it looks like it's a good company. It's a good fit for us. They really wanna come here if they can get things put together. So just means more jobs for Tulare County, and we're looking forward, hopefully, to helping them get in here. Thank you.
Last week, I went to Sacramento as a delegate from the Tulare County Association of Governments. We had our One Voice lobbying trip to Sacramento, and the One Voice group are the eight Valley Counties from Stockton down to Bakersfield. And each association of governments has two representatives that sit on the policy committee. So I went with that group to lobby for, for different issues. The one thing that came up during those meetings was high-speed rail. Now, I think a lot of us were thinking about high-speed rail was way out there, and maybe it's a little closer. It still may be way out there. But with, with the federal funds and the passing of the bond, it looks like high-speed rail is gonna be imminent. And I asked the question, where are they gonna build the first stretch? The first stretch will be from Los Angeles to Anaheim. The second stretch will be in the valley. But all of a sudden, because high-speed rail is imminent, it changes the planning process of California. So Fresno and Bakersfield and Merced have some very important planning issues that they have to resolve because they are going to get stops. Now Supervisor Michael Rubio from Kern County has pointed out that there are developers in Kern County that are looking to buy land on the outskirts of the downtown business area because it's cheaper, and they're expecting that the population will grow because of the high-speed rail. And he asked the question to the electives we met and the staff people, and he asked the question, is that smart? Shouldn't we try to focus our population growth where that station is, where it stops, so you have the walkable communities? But because of SEQA, the California Environmental Act, that we have to go through all these studies to rezone the land next to the stations, that the developers don't wanna go through the process or don't have time to go through the process before the station's built. So when proposition, well, not proposition, but in Senate Bill 375 that was passed last year, it allowed for a SEQA exemption. And that exemption was basically for places like the metropolitan areas of Walnut Creek, the Bay Area, and Southern California. So we asked for an exemption, a SEQA exemption, basically for a project in Fresno County, downtown Fresno. So we are asking for a pilot for a SEQA exemption so we can concentrate new living. So we are asking for a pilot for a SEQA exemption so we can concentrate new living residences downtown or close to the terminal to where this high speed rail, well, the high speed rail terminal. And that did get some traction. The other part is because of high speed rail, we're going to have to, the state of California is going to have to look at their, their circulation plan. So as a result of that, the circulation plan also will include freight rail. And freight rail is a short haul rail that all the eight counties are lobbying to keep in place. So freight rail becomes a very important issue to the overall plan, the plan of moving goods and moving people. I also attended a meeting of supervisors when I was up there. Our Sacramento representative who represents many of the counties in the state of California called a special meeting together to discuss the water bond. And so we discussed the issues in the water bond and there were twenty counties represented in that meeting, so we had supervisors from twenty counties. The following day, there was a meeting sponsored by CSAC, which was basically to give a little history of water and to discuss the water bond. And there were over twenty-five counties that were involved in that meeting. And for the first time, we were able to discuss the issue in an open forum without having the time limits that your time's up because the next presenter's coming. So there were a lot of issues raised, there's a lot of questions. I did not see an overwhelming support from the Board of Supervisors members that were in those meetings for the bond. There are a lot of questions that need to be answered. Now, that politically could change if the federal government comes in with a stimulus plan to put money with the eleven billion dollar bond measure if the state of California passes it. So that changes the complexion. If you, if you draw, draw a lot of federal money into California to help with the water issue, it's, uh, becomes more doable versus eleven billion dollar bond on its own for water. I was also informed that the state of California is issuing bonds now for about seven and a half percent state tax free bonds and they're having a hard time selling them. To me, as an investor, I would say, boy, that looks awful good to me. But when your, your financial markets won't even buy them seven and a half percent interest, I think we have a real serious problem with ever funding this eleven billion dollar water bond. So that's what I learned.
That also goes for the ten billion dollar high speed rail bonds because those have to be sold and they have the same problems. Mr. Cox.
There's one thing today, everyone's heard of the loop bus. City of Iseti has a loop bus that runs around internally. Tulare County and the board has been very supportive of the loop bus out in incorporated areas and we received our first report for the year. By way, just a little history, in November of last year, just three months ago, Jed turned a bye off Jeff Forbes in our office, put together a information meeting here in this building and invited all of the organizations in the county that provide services to youth and explained the loop bus program to them, how it worked, how they could apply to, to get services. And the report is very encouraging. The first two and a half years that the loop bus ran, a little over two thousand youth rode the bus, which was very good, we were very happy with those numbers. As we sit here today, the month of January, so last month, the loop bus transported seven hundred and sixty-four youth to youth activities. So we're on track to provide services to approximately ten thousand young people in the county this year with a loop bus service, which I think is very commendable. I think the board needs to be proud of, of what we've been able to accomplish by working together with the nonprofit agencies, with these providers that do work with young people. Very excited about this, very excited about the, the youth getting into those centers, receiving mentoring, receiving after school help, homework help, whatever they're, you know, they need, these providers are doing. So it was very exciting to see the program grow like this and we expect it to continue to grow, especially as we come into the summer. I'd like to congratulate Supervisor Ashida out in his district, the Boys and Girls Club are about half of those numbers just out there with one route taking the, the young folks from a school to the Boys and Girls Club where they would not be able to go to because it's such a distance for them. So by way of report, I think the board would like to know that the loop bus service is becoming very productive and I, and I would probably gesture to say that this might be one of the most ridden buses that we have in the county if you compare it to all the other lines.
Thank you. Mr. Vanderpoel.
Okay, I have a couple of things today. First of all, I want to correct myself. Last week, I said that the Tulare Gang Awareness Forums were going to be held on the eighth of April and also the fifteenth of April. And that is not the case, it's going to be the fifteenth and the twenty-second. Just wanted to make that correction. And for further details, please feel free to contact the office. I too was a part of that Sacramento Water Discussion with the twenty supervisors that Supervisor Ashida attended. And it was very interesting to see, you know, a lot of people look at the water issue as being a west side issue with the potential of being an east side issue in the future. But at this forum, as was evident by the supervisors present, this is an issue that's statewide from as far south as Imperial County to as far north as, geez, I think all the way up to Shasta County or.
Modoc.
Modoc County was for this, that was represented. But it's a huge issue, it's a very complicated issue. A lot of questions need to be answered before this goes forward and look forward to being a part of that process and shaping the policy so that it will actually have a positive benefit for folks here in Tulare County who are certainly impacted by this water crisis. And then lastly, I'd like to draw attention to the largest event in our county, which is happening this week, that's at the World Ag Expo, happening today, tomorrow and Thursday. This event is a great event, kicked off this morning, a little bit of rain today, so it's probably not going to have the attendance that it should have had. But there's tomorrow and Thursday as well, great tri-tip sandwiches and ribeye sandwiches and a lot to learn about agriculture and the technology available to a lot of our constituents and farmers throughout the world. And please stop by the Tulare County Tourism Booth. There we are passing out pamphlets that are going to further showcase and direct attention to Tulare County's greatest resource and that's agriculture. So pay attention for the Taste Tulare County logo and, and name and concept going around even further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. And I was just going to mention too, yes, that's the reason why we have our meeting starting at one thirty this afternoon is that the board was present for the opening ceremonies this morning and we were all in attendance there, as were a lot of our elected officials. And a good turnout was there, the governor did come later on in the morning. Our Representative Connie Conway was there, Jean Fuller from Kern County was there, Danny Gilmore from Kings County. So we had a good representation of people that were there. And actually, I've often heard that when it rains, it brings out more people because farmers who otherwise are out in their fields working, when it rains, they come to the, to the farm show because they can actually, they can't get much done out in the field, so they come. So we hope they have a great year this year and it is a commercial venture, but you are welcome as guests to come and, and visit, it's a lot of fun. It, it's amazing to me to see the breadth of agriculture because it is, it's a huge, huge enterprise, well more than just seeds and land. It's, you know, it's, it's everything from financing and insurance to the latest inventions and gizmos from all over the world and it's a very dynamic process and, and we're very privileged to have such an event happen here in our backyard in Tulare County. So would encourage you, if you have the time, to, to go and, and visit there. At this time, I'd like to take up our consent calendar. We do have our items in our original agenda, which are items seven through twenty-six, there is a, an addendum to that which adds one item and then item two on the addendum actually is revised language for, cleanup language for item number twenty-six. Are there any items which members of the board would like to handle separately? Anyone from the audience wish to have any items handled separately? Seeing and hearing now, intended motion?
Motion to approve consent calendar, seven through twenty-six plus two addendum items.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Mr. Cox and a sec by Mr. Vanderpoel. Please cast your votes. Votes unanimous for the consent calendar. At this time, we will take up our timed items and the first item is a public hearing concerning, excuse me, item number four, and that's the Zup property. Good morning, Mr. Fussell.
Good afternoon, Board.
By way of introduction, we have had two of these items before the board. At last meeting, we had some specific questions and they were continued to this day. So I'm assuming that there will not be the kind of extensive presentation that we had last meeting.
That's correct, Board.
More specifically with the, with the issues, then there's one that we have to go into the whole spiel.
In fact, what I would also like to announce is that item number four for Zup, the first public hearing, we have come to an agreement, we have a signed agreement from the Zup owner and that item will not be heard today. So I will, if you give me a moment to fast forward through my slides to get to.
So item four will be off count.
That's correct.
All right.
So the item we are on now, which is item number five, which is Bill and Tanya Miller Family Limited Partnership. This is a continued hearing from last day and again, just quickly reacquainting the board with the property, it's, the property is actually located inside the city limits, city of Tulare. It's right here on Cart, on Hillman Street, Road one oh eight, south of Cart Mill or Avenue two forty-eight. Right of way that the county is seeking for this project is eighteen feet in width, approximately a hundred and ninety-two feet in length. In addition to the right of way for the project, we need a thirteen foot easement for the Tulare Irrigation District as well as a twenty-five foot easement, which actually encompasses the thirteen foot easement for T I D for temporary construction purposes. And the descriptions of those are included, resolution of necessity as appendix A. And before you, you have an impact drawing that shows how these, this right of way easements affects this property. At the hearing that we held last week, a question came up regarding the need for the T I D easement as well as whether or not staff and through its agent made the offer pursuant to Government Code Section seven two six seven point two A. Relative to the T I D easement, currently on the ground, there is a twenty foot easement for a Tulare Irrigation District pipeline is immediately adjacent and to the west of the right of way. The pipeline is still in use to provide irrigation water to some of the undeveloped parcels in the area. It serves properties to the south and to the west of the, of the subject site. So unfortunately, it's not possible to completely eliminate the need for the T I D facility or the easement. The right of way that's being acquired is eighteen feet in width and actually overlies the twenty foot T I D easement. And in discussing this with the Tulare Irrigation District, they do not want the pipeline within the road right of way. In fact, the current pipeline that's there is, is in what's called cast and placed pipe, which doesn't even have a load bearing capacity for being placed under a roadway. In addition, since the roadway is actually being developed inside the city of Tulare city limits, the city of Tulare does not want the T I D pipeline under the road either. As indicated, the need for the easement is thirteen feet in width, however, T I D has a minimum standard width of fifteen feet. Two additional feet are actually remaining from the existing twenty foot easement because we're only taking an eighteen foot right of way. I liken this situation to other public utilities. If we had an Edison pole line that was in its own easement, not within the county right of way, but within its own easement adjacent to the roadway, the project would be obligated to, and we're widening into that easement, to acquire an easement on behalf of the, the utility and then relocate those poles. So in essence, this is, instead of being an above ground easement that would be highly visible and well acknowledged, we're basically dealing with an underground pipeline or easement that needs to be accommodated in order to keep it in place. With that, staff believes that there are the findings that the property is necessary as part of your resolution of necessity process. The second question was relative to whether or not the appropriate offer was made pursuant to Government Code Section seven two six, seven two six seven point two A. As noted in the public hearing last week, summary offer package was mailed to the Millers on December second of last year. That document in and of itself did not specifically identify, it identified the total cost that the county was offering for the property. It did not provide a breakdown. However, included in that package was an agreement for purchase. And inside of that agreement for purchase, there was a breakdown and an assignment of the cost or the compensation for the project. There was an identification of how much money was to be offered for the right of way to be acquired, how much money was going to be offered for the temporary construction easement that was being acquired, and then how much money, or actually zero dollars identified for the, the T I D easement that's being requested. And the analysis on the easement was that the road right of way that's being acquired is encumbered by that easement and therefore the appraiser would have assigned a lesser value to it. And then would have compensated and could have probably done an analysis to identify the compensation for the T I D easement. What the appraiser did was give the full value to the right of way that's being acquired, even with the encumbrance of the T I D easement, and basically then said the needed easement for T I D then has zero value. So that's, that's the process that was used and that's how we've treated the various properties down through this area when dealing with the T I D easement issue. In addition to the breakdown that was in the agreement for purchase, the county's right of way agent spoke with Council for Miller regarding the compensation approach. So there was a dialogue with the property owner's representative as to how that compensation was determined and the rationale behind it. And so staff is believing or is confident that the requirements of Government Code Section seven two six seven point two A has been met. And then furthermore, we would also comment that really the valuation of the T I D easement is a compensation issue that's not to be determined as part of this resolution of necessity process, but to be determined through the courts, through the, the, the normal eminent domain process. So with that, staff would again recommend that you conduct a continued hearing and that you adopt the resolution of necessity based upon the comments and testimony presented on February second as well as today and with the findings that have been identified in the agenda item and presented to you last week. And with that, staff would respond to any questions that the board may have.
Are there any questions from board members?
Well, I, I would just make the, the question slash comment, since this is in my district, I, I would just like to comment that we have been in touch with the property owner. This isn't happening without contact with them, but also it's just important for them to know that this hearing is not about compensation, this is just merely whether or not the, the need is there to move forward, the necessity is there. And that negotiations and dialogue between county staff and the property owner will continue to take place beyond this point, no matter what happens in this hearing's outcome, so.
This is one clarification, there is also the requirement that we have made an offer that is compliant with Section seven two six seven two A of the Government Code, which we have information to our, brought before us this morning. Anyone, okay, at this time, the public hearing, anyone wishing to address this matter, please come forward and give us your name and address. Seeing and hearing no one, we will close the public comment, bring it back to the board for action.
Motion to adopt resolution of necessity.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Cox and a second by Mr. Ennis. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous in support. And that will bring us to item number six, another public hearing.
Yes, this is a continued public hearing from February second and this relates to Strawberry Stand L S C property, which is located at the northeast corner of Road one oh eight and Avenue two forty-eight. And I know it's a little difficult to see because of the hatching on the property, it actually overlies the pink shading. This property is another one that's inside the city limits, city of Tulare. In this particular case, the, the proposal to acquire right of way varying in width from sixty-nine feet on the south, forty-four feet on the north, over approximately a four hundred and eighteen foot length. In addition, a requirement for a temporary construction easement. In addition, a requirement for a temporary construction easement, ten-foot in width, varying down to three-foot of width. And again, the property for the right-of-way would be acquired in fee, and the TCE would be acquired in the form of an easement with a short duration. And this is the impact drawing that I presented to the Board last Tuesday. The question that was asked was by the property owner and their representative, was the amount of, regarding the amount of right-of-way required. They were expressing a concern with what I would call the notch. Let me get, let me get a better graphic. The notch that's right here, whether or not that really, in their opinion, was necessary for the project at hand, because it begins to set them up for the right-of-way that's needed on, on Cart Mill Avenue for the future Cart Mill project. The, the right-of-way that's established out there was based upon the city of Tulare in defining what the right-of-way needs for Cart Mill. And in fact, they had, the property owner had processed a parcel map within the city of Tulare, parcel map number 4986, a copy which is here. And you can see on this parcel map, the, it was basically a one parcel parcel map with parcel one, and then with a remainder over here to the, to the east. They actually dedicated the right-of-way along for the future Cart Mill widening project. But over here to the west, because this wasn't really part of the parcel map, because they did it as a remainder, it does show the future right-of-way alignment for Cart Mill in this area, and then also for Road 108 up, up in this area. This is a blow-up of the area, and the shaded area is an overlay of the right-of-way that, that we're, we were proposing or are proposing to acquire. And you can see how this fits with the future right-of-way line coming in at the diagonal coming down, and then the future right-of-way for Cart Mill, take off at this point and go, go towards the east. We've taken a look at our construction plans and where improvements are planned to be built as part of this project. We're not proposing to improve the whole intersection. We're only proposing to provide the, for the existing width of Cart Mill in this location. We would be constructing a new traffic signal at this location to accommodate the widened Road 108, and that signal hardware is going to be placed actually down in this location. Ultimately, it will have to be moved, Cart Mill is widened, and the signal hardware would end up, up in this location. So we can actually accommodate the request of the property owner, still accommodate the project, by eliminating the need for this notch area, which is right here. Bring the line straight down in the due north-south fashion. We would need a slice across here in order to be able to accommodate all the signal hardware and everything else that would be going at the corner. So this afternoon, staff is recommending that the Board conduct a continued public hearing, and then based upon the evidence that's provided earlier in writing, adopt a resolution of necessity with the modified acquisition area, making the findings that have been identified. With that, staff would answer any questions that the Board may have.
Are there any questions?
I, I have to make one disclosure, disclosure right now. I did speak with this property owner, and he had a few questions for me, and then also informed me that he would not be able to make today's meeting due to a prior commitment. And I did tell him that I would be making my decision today based upon the information presented at the public hearing, and that I couldn't commit in any direction as to which, which way the Board would go or I would go. So I just wanted to make that disclosure. And also, in, in speaking with him, he just wanted to reiterate the point that was made last week, and that was that we consider the impact to this property in its entirety, which it looks like that was what staff did. Thank you, Britt, for doing that as you went back to the office after last week's meeting. So I think, have you been in contact with the property owner to let him know that this is...
We've actually had contact with their legal representative, Mr. Stan, who was here. I have not had contact with the property owner, but this is probably the best way that we can respond to his needs.
Okay.
I would still actually offer to him that, you know, that if he has an interest, the county would still be willing to, you know, purchase that as originally defined. But it's basically his choice. And what you will, what I will be providing, Ms. Baldwin, if you so act, will be the revised legal description and the revised platte for the resolution of necessity. We can work with what I've just proposed.
Okay, thank you.
All right, at this time, we open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to address this on this matter is invited to come forward at this time and give us your name and address. Seeing and hearing no one, just as we bring it back to the Board, I would like to compliment staff. Issue was raised the last meeting, and in one week's time, it's been resolved. It would appear to their satisfaction, because this was a concern that they had raised about taking so much of their property at this time for this particular project. And it appears that we got what we need to do for our project to move forward, and it has had a lesser impact on the, the property owner's property. And, and I think that's a good resolution. At this time, entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Sheed, a second by Mr. Vanderpoel, please cast your votes. Vote is unanimous.
And Board, I think I'm actually pleased to announce at this point in time that we are probably through the resolution of necessity process for both the Road 80 and the Road 108 project, so.
Very good.
Hopefully, you won't have to listen to me drone on.
Thank you.
Drone on about the project description, and my court reporter won't have to listen to me drone on, so. I think we got her done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Board.
At this time, I'd like to take up the, the addendum item number three, which is a, from the District Attorney's Office on our untimed items.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board.
Good morning. Nice to have you here, Mr. Attorney.
Mr. Chairman, the matter before the Board is a request from our office that you authorize the acceptance of funding for an in-home support services fraud program. I previously came before the Board to request permission to seek this funding. We have extensively researched this, both here and in our neighboring county Fresno, and we feel this, there's a real need for this program.
Any questions of Mr. Klein? I know it's been, gotten a lot of press and from Fresno about the problems that they're having. Did, did they have a similar type of grant to do an investigation, do we know?
The Fresno County is unique. About six years ago, they received some seed funding from the state to look into the type of program. And as a consequence of all the fraud that they found, the Board of Supervisors has actually been funding that program out of general fund. And they've been experiencing a lot of success. And this year, I, along with Elizabeth Egan, the Fresno DA, went to Sacramento at the invitation of Laura Chick, who's the governor's inspector general. And along with her, we went and, and actually had a sit-down with the chief of staff of the governor, discussed this program and what he was proposing. But if you look at the two counties, Tulare County being adjacent to Fresno County, essentially the same demographic, same economic background, they have a very, very extensive fraud program, lots of cases, yet we had not received any. And we're looking into that now. We've already jumped the gun, so to speak, and started investigating some cases that we know are there. And so we expect the more that we come online with this program, the more fraud we'll be able to ferret out and hopefully get those funds redirected where they're supposed to go.
There are no questions, entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Ennis, second by Mr. Vanderpoel, please cast your votes. Vote is unanimous, thanks, Phil. That will bring us then to our untimed item number 27, a request from Information Technology to approve purchases. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, I'm Alicia Beal, and I'm the IT Project Manager for this project. Unfortunately, pegged sick today, so she was not able to attend. So she asked me to talk in her spot. Currently, the county information server, used primarily by Human Services, which houses data as related to CalWin, is growing at an astronomical rate. The current data storage is also very costly and requires a lot of time to run the reports from this system. The system is also at maximum capacity. A much more efficient method of storage and failovers are needed for this database. Also, the current FileNet system, which Human Services uses for document imaging, is four to five years old and nearing or at end of life. The current database configuration has been reviewed by both systems at the IT Database Team and does not meet the Human Services business continuity requirements. So the IT Database Team has recommended that we build a high-availability SQL database backend and move the FileNet and CIS databases to this new environment. If the FileNet system is migrated to another document imaging vendor in the future, the same database backend can still be used for that system. Both systems today rely on tape for restore if the system is lost. This project will provide the following. It will create a redundant server farm that can be restored in hours versus days in the event of a total system failure or data center loss. It can provide additional storage for both systems and improve access and availability of the database systems. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding this project.
Any questions? I just have a, just a quick little thing I saw, and we get news clippings from various organizations and news services, and, and one that I read this, just this morning, said, "See what Hawaii has done to deal with major financial problems." And I'm thinking, wow, what, what great thing have they come up with? And so I clicked to the, to the report, and it was the, an imaging process to reduce their paper needs, and they were hoping to save 1.2 million over the next two years. And I thought, well, see, for a state that's trying to find 19.9 billion dollars, don't think that's going to quite get them there. So anyway, I just, you know, I, I think Tulare County is ahead of the curve in terms of what we are doing like this to reduce our paper and our need for paper and storage and all that sort of thing. And so, this is, this is a great project for our county. The state could probably learn from us, but I don't think it's going to be the fantasy they're looking for. So, at this time, entertain a motion.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Vanderpoel, second by Mr. Cox, and the vote is unanimous. Thank you very much. And this will bring us to item number 28, our federal legislative regulatory platform. Debra, Debbie Vaughn, I believe, is going to be presenting this to us this afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The four items that you have before you are the proposed 2010 federal legislative and regulatory platform items. This year, there is a smaller number of items on the list, and that is because we had recommendation from our staff to do that in order to focus our efforts a little bit more. If approved, these items will be the items that you will take to DC on your lobbying trip. And just a brief summary of each of the items. The first one is a gang prevention initiative. It's actually a three-year request. Year one is before you and shows that it's 517,500. The total amount over the three years is 1,715,000. It's a three-part program. One part is to fund two community centers for three years, to purchase and operate those for three years. The other part is to purchase three additional loop buses. And the third part is an expansion of the existing service learning program. The second item on the appropriation platform request list is the Lake Success Dam Seismic Remediation Program. The $10 million that is on here is for Phase One, that's acquisition and design work. And that's estimated not to be 100% of the acquisition, but a large percentage of it.
If I could stop you just a second, and for the benefit of those who are here or listening to us, this was an issue the last time that we met in Washington DC, because there was a question about how much money we would be requesting and what would be accomplished with that money. The concern was, if you ask for $3 million, and then you really couldn't use it, the $3 million, then it was basically stranded or wasted assets. So you'd had to ask, you need to have enough money to accomplish something, otherwise it doesn't do any good. The other thing was that we did get an allocation, I understand, and appropriation, and then it disappeared on us and went someplace else. So that raises the question, is the $10 million a sufficient amount of money that we can actually benefit from that, or are we going to run into the same problem next, this next year?
The $10 million was recommended by Congressman Nunes's office as an amount after speaking with the Army Corps. We talked to their office, they talked to the Corps, they called us back and said that would be an appropriate amount to request for this year. The President's budget that just came out does only have half a million dollars in it for this project. So it's clear that the lobbying efforts need to be quite strong to try to get this item back before the Corps and, and in their minds as a priority. Currently, the project does not have a project manager. He was promoted, and someone has not been identified to replace him yet. So we are not certain why it was, for all intents and purposes, kind of put on the back burner, but we know that it's a priority to the county, so that's why it's on this list again.
I think we know why the money disappeared. Is, is the Congress in their wisdom put in a requirement of an independent study of what has been done for 20 years? And so, while we're going through the study process, they moved the money somewhere else. And I think we're, we're close, aren't we, to getting the independent study done?
No, I don't think we're close on that yet. I don't think they've even picked a committee, but one of the things we're going to be doing is, is we, we have got the irrigation districts on board with us to go back this time. So we're not only going to have the, the Board of Supervisors and TCAG, but we're going to have the irrigation districts too, so hopefully make enough noise back there to get somebody's attention.
Okay, any more questions? The third item on the list is a request for 1.5 million dollars for rural community water systems. That request is to fund studies, really to examine the problems throughout the county, to come up with some potential regional solutions for water quality and water supply issues in, in our many disadvantaged communities throughout the county. The last item on the list is a 1.5 million dollar request for federal funding to complete the improvements at 198 and Plaza Drive. Any questions on any of the items?
Other questions? You know, this, this list is a little shorter than we've had in the past. We wanted to kind of focus and our attention while we're back there this time on, on things which are doable, some of the things we've kind of had on a wish list, and they just sort of have stayed on that list for a long period of time. You may notice they're not on this list this time around, but we wanted to do something which was really effective while we're back there. And they will oftentimes ask us, what, what are your top two priorities? Or what are your top three priorities? Do you want to have that shortlist? And felt that would be a better way of going forward. Are there any questions or comments?
I should also probably mention
Comment to your district.
That some of the items, there are additional items that we are asking for, road items, but those go through the Highway Transportation Reauthorization Bill. So a couple of those items were on the list last year. Those requests that we made are still valid, because they have not passed a new authorization bill. So I wouldn't want the public to think that, that those are no longer issues. It's just a timing thing.
And, and these are all, you know, this is the Tulare County list for us as an individual entity, and then there's also the TCAG list that has a whole separate series of transportation projects.
Correct.
Fox?
I want to commend staff on the way they've put this together, you know, narrowing this down, you know, having, going into it with the knowledge that they're only going to look at the top few anyways. If you send them 20, they're not going to get that far into your stack. So I want to commend staff on working diligently, doing very well-put-together detailed proposals. I had the opportunity to work on the gang prevention initiative. I'm very happy with the way that came out. As I looked at the rest of them, I saw they were all very well-thought-out, very well-planned, where it's, it's actually something that's doable and not a pie-in-the-sky request, which we've been told they get thousands of. So I want to commend staff on the work that they did on this. That's very well-put-together, Debbie.
And Mr. Chad, I just want to comment on the, the first request, the gang prevention initiative. I, I really am glad to see the prioritization of that request, because I know especially one, one of the communities that will benefit from a community center will be Early Mart, and we know that it's very difficult in that community, because those children live in Tulare County, and so they're Tulare County residents, but they're educated in Kern County, which makes it kind of a difficult task to find a connection with Tulare County. So creating a youth center down there will hopefully give them more of a sense of being a resident of Tulare County and a part of this community, and hopefully will help to stem some of the gang activity, of which we know there has been a lot. So I'm sure glad to see this and look forward to bringing it forward.
I approached the Chairman Worthy about expanding on the water issue. Not only success, because last year, we almost lost the Friant Water Exchange Contractors. And I think it's an important issue that we need to, to still address and push for. Is some type of resolution? is some type of resolution on the, either the west side, which indirectly affects us, or the San Joaquin River mitigation plan. So right now, we're sending 25% of our water down the river that we used to have last year because of the settlement. And last year, these, the pumps weren't turned on, we almost lost all our water, or most of our water, to the exchange contractors. So Miss Mayor, Ed Murray, will be traveling with us, and he's very well prepared to address the water issues as how it will affect our communities. So some way we can tweak it just a little bit to give that opportunity.
Well, we'll be talking about water through two different issues, and we may be able to have as a subset of the two that we have now in some way. And certainly being educational, if nothing else, to let them know the connection for us. Many people don't realize that, they think it's a west side problem, they don't realize we have the exchange contractors over in the east side, and if they lose their water, we lose our water because it's, we're using their water. So, but it's not, it's not, not well understood or known, I think, and so we will certainly use that opportunity to advance that information. Anything else? If not, then I would entertain a motion to accept.
Chair be glad to make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Vanderpoel, and the vote is unanimous. And that brings us to item number 29, presentation given by the Resource Management Agency regarding an overview of the California Statewide Needs Assessment Project. Fussell, welcome back.
Thank you, Board. Britt Fussell, Assistant Director with the Resource Management Agency. Wasn't but a couple of weeks ago that you approved a reorganization in the Resource Management Agency, and I took on the responsibilities of, of Mr. John Brew and the transportation branch, so I'm going to make this presentation, I'm not going to pretend that I know everything about roads because I'm still learning, but I'm more than happy to take your questions and go back and find the answers in return. The California State Association of Counties, the League of California Cities, County Engineers' Association of California, the County of Los Angeles, the California Regional Transportation Planning Agencies, California Rural Counties Task Force, all got together and funded a California statewide needs assessment relative to the roads in the state of California. And as a result of that study was a, a production of this, of this report. It's about, you know, three quarters of an inch thick, trying to identify the issues relative to the roads in California. So what I'd like to do today is, what the CSAC has requested and the County Engineers' Association has requested is that the county's road commissioners make this presentation to their boards and then solicit a letter from the boards to the governor and the legislature regarding the issues that are facing transportation funding in California today. And it's probably none too soon because I just read an email of something that's going on here shortly relative to the legislature and trying to deal with the state budget issue and how that affects roads. The first thing they did was take a look at what conditions of the local streets and roads throughout California, how much it would cost to improve and maintain those pavements into an acceptable condition, what are the safety, traffic, and regulatory needs, and then is there funding shortfall, and if so, what is it? This is a graphic that presents the, the breakdown of the road system within the state of California, and from that, you can see that 81% of the California's roads are owned by either cities or counties. And 19% are either state highways, federal highways, or other, which could be forest lands, reservation lands, et cetera. And also, the, the study took a look at not just the pavement itself, but also sidewalks, any ADA ramp issues, curb and gutter issues, storm drains, drainage obviously is a big issue, and lighting. And the other thing that we attempted to do in this presentation is try to sprinkle it with some local flavor. You'll see there's a picture of a sidewalk project on a safe route to school we've been working on in the Monson-Sultana area. Did I get it spelled correctly this time?
Yes, you did.
Thank you. All the data collection, actually, they were able to do a very good job in soliciting data from the agencies in the state, a total of 406 agencies, 56 of the 58 counties, and 350 cities all participated in the survey. Of the 130 agencies that were missing, small cities, no data or no resources to collect the data. They also wanted to take a look at how the data was being collected and kept, and so they asked agencies to respond, "How do you manage your pavement?" And so this is sort of a, a results of a survey on pavement management systems. Streetsaver is a, a system that was developed up in the Bay Area. Micropaver is through the American Public Works Association, is actually an Army Corps of Engineers program that's been adapted for pavement maintenance. Actually, the county of Tulare falls into the other PMS, so we're part of the 20% that have sort of written their own, their own database system for managing this. This is how we conduct a pavement management system, assessments each year, doing a field evaluation, collecting and entering that data. From that, the database then identifies what the current pavement condition index, or PCI, you'll, you'll hear me reference that several times in today's presentation, do a prioritization, and then from that, we produce our own report on the conditions of the, of the pavement in Tulare County, and then use this in developing our strategy for pavement maintenance for the, the coming budget year. The pavement index, the PCI ranges from anywhere from a zero, which is completely failed, up to 100, which is good and excellent. And here are some pictures, kind of giving you a graphic representation of a good or excellent road, and then one that's considered to be failed. In the state, the, the average PCI out of the study that was developed is 68. The county of Tulare is doing a little bit better, based on our analysis through our system, we actually have a PCI of 70.5. This graph explains the critical nature of pavement management and, and doing maintenance effort on pavement, in that if you're up here in the, in the good end, up in the green band, the amount of money you need to spend to continue to maintain that pavement is very small versus getting down into the area where it's red, where the road is virtually failed. Anywhere from $2 a square foot for maintenance effort up here, to 60 to $100 a square foot if you had to reconstruct the pavement. And this pavement, a PCI of 68 is right here on this boundary where you're crossing from $2 a square foot into 15 to $40 a square foot. As mentioned, the county of Tulare has an average PCI of, of a little over 70, 3,005 maintained miles a road. And one thing to really comment on is that with the adoption of Measure R, it's provided additional money, not only to the county of Tulare, but the cities in the county to help them maintain their roads and maintain a, a higher level PCI. Here are some examples of county PCIs. This actually is Road 80. Road 80 actually drives the average up because it's a brand-new road. It has a PCI 100. Down here is a picture of Road 88, where we're sort of in the failed category. You can see that county of Tulare, we have 53% of our roads are in the good category, 29% are in that blue at-risk category, and then we have 18% that are in the poor or failed category.
Chair?
Yes.
And this is the 3,005 miles
Right.
That we, that we're responsible for.
These are, these, this is our road system.
Our 3,005 miles.
One thing that staff did advise me is that our average PCI has actually kind of hovered around in the 60 to 70 and a half range over the last five years, and again, here's another picture of the Road 80 widening project. Funding. State funding, this would be, sorry about that. This is your highway users' gas tax, this is your local transportation fund, this is, this is the Prop 42-type funding. You can see that the percent of the annual funding for road maintenance in California was 41% on the state level in 6, 7, 7, 8, in 8, 9, 40 and a half, and then it's jumped upwards to 52.9 in, in the 9, 10, and onward. I, I think this is, relates to the Proposition 42 and the, and the other funding sources that have been identified for street maintenance. In addition, there's Proposition 1B that was approved by the voters several years ago, actually created some one-time money, if you will, for road maintenance, and that's the reason why it sort of shows up as zero in the out-years. Then you have federal money that comes in, you have the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act has put a substantial amount of funding into California for road maintenance, a lot on the state highways, but also on local roads. In fact, we're going to be, we'll be coming before you here shortly with authorization to bid about $10 million worth of asphalt overlay projects in the county using ARRA money. And then local, local funds, which are monies typical of your Measure R in Tulare County. This actually is a snapshot of the county's funding breakdown, and you can, you can see here for the county, and I, I don't have a dollar amounts with me, the, the state, the highway users' tax account, or we commonly, affectionately refer to it as a HUTA, and Prop 42 is the red segment, and we've got Prop 1B and STIP funding coming in here with the yellow. And what's driving this section right here is that we're receiving STIP money for our major road construction projects or widening projects. So this, this is, again, is a snapshot based upon the 9, 10 budget, and it sort of drives what we're doing relative to our construction projects we're working on, our widening projects is driving the yellow piece. This is the ARRA money, along with a mixture of other federal funds that we might receive, such as farm-to-market money. Here's our Measure, Measure R segment, and then the LTF piece, and then this is money that's in our budgeted for other kind of local sources that show up for expenditures by the roads' operation, which actually may or may not be on roads, but for work that they do. Proposition 42, cities and counties will receive approximately 592 million in 9, 10. Of that, the county will be receiving about 5.8 million, and we use that for maintenance rehabilitation of, of county roads. Of the highway users' tax account, there's 968 million statewide for cities and counties in 9, 10. Of that, the county receives about, excuse me, 7.2 million, and this is probably one of the more flexible sources, along with Measure R, which is really flexible because it's, it's local money. Some of the things that's happened over time currently in this budget year and, and conceivably could happen in a future budget year is that the states deferred the first two quarters of Proposition 42 to funds to cities and counties within the 9, 10 fiscal year. They're saying we're going to get it, but they're hanging on to it for their own cash flow purposes. In addition, the states deferred seven months of the gas tax subventions to the cities and counties in 9, 10. Again, they're saying we're going to get it, but they're just hanging on to it for their own cash flow purposes. The Legislative Analyst Office projects that, again, I think you mentioned it, Chairman, a $20 billion budgets deficit at the state level, again, that's, has the risk of putting the transportation revenues again in jeopardy. This is a kind of an interesting graph. Right now, if, if we were to live with exactly the amount of money we're receiving, the current PCI statewide is at 68, and it's at risk of, out at year 2033, of dropping down to a poor. The cost to maintain a PCI at 68 is about 37 billion. If we allow it to go to a poor, that cost is driven up to 79 billion. And this is a chart showing that, anticipate a 10-year shortfall. We've got 10-year needs statewide in this column, existing funding is way less than adequate to cover that, so in the 10-year period, we're looking at a shortfall for pavements anywhere of 51.7 billion, and essential components, other components of the road system of almost $20 billion.
Mr. Chair, I have one question based on that comment. Does, does this diagram depict funding, the existing funding including Measure R, or is that?
No, this is, this is statewide.
Just, just state.
I apologize. If, any slide
So not the county?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, this is, this is statewide, including Tulare County, and again, I apologize. Any, any slide that's specifically related to Tulare County has the Tulare County seal on it. I did ask staff to, you know, point out which ones are ours and which ones are theirs because they're using the same format.
Thanks.
Taking a look at our pavement management system, what staff has identified is that if you were to take all the roads and that 18% of poor and failed, and you take the roads that are in the blue category, and you try to improve them to get them up into the upper category where you start approaching a PCI of 100, we would need $200 million. That only apply, that number is accurate from the, from the analysis here if you were to work within existing right-of-way and dealt with existing pavement widths, didn't do any shoulder work or anything else. You just looked at county pavement system, and you tried to improve it to get to 100. If you were to take a look at what it would take to include bridges, widening the roads to include a better travel lane, to include improved shoulders, additional right-of-way that would be needed for all that, there was an estimate that was produced of about $500 million would be necessary to do all those components of work, in addition to just the work to bring the pavement itself up without doing, you know, any of the widening or roadway enhancements. And here's a picture of a, of a successful project, which is the Avenue 416 at Road 56 that was completed with Measure R, the first regional project with Measure R in the county. Out of the study, the, the good news that they received through the analysis was that they got 93% response system on the local system, and that the statewide average PCI is currently 68. This indicates that the price of gas is 2.88 per gallon, actually maybe a little more than that today. The not-so-good news that the study identified is that the PCI of 68 is really at risk and could drop to 48 if you only were to live with existing funding. It could get worse if the state has funding takeaways relative to transportation, and that the study identified the need to more than double existing funding to maintain our transportation assets. And with that, I attempt to respond to your questions here if I know the answer, or I will, can come back at a future meeting with a response to those questions. And with that, staff is suggesting that the board adopt the resolution and send a letter to the governor and the legislators regarding the transportation funding issues in the state.
Couple of comments. I, I recall when I first came on the board 11 years ago, that that time, I think it was estimated that our backlog of work in Tulare County was about $150 million, and I know it's over $500 million today. And that's with Measure R. Of course, we just have, Measure R is just now being, you know, implemented the last couple of years, and so we are, we are dealing with a difficult situation. The other observation is that until we had Prop 42 and 1B, one of the ways that the, the primary way the states dealt with budgetary problems was basically to take transportation dollars and just reallocate them to statewide operations. And I, and I have to kind of wonder what condition, if we had gotten those tax dollars that we were supposed to have, and those had been allocated and spent on, on transportation, where we would be today? Obviously, it would be better than we are, but I don't know how much better it would be, but, but the problem is real, and, and obviously, the purpose of this is to demonstrate to the legislature the critical nature of where we are in our road situation, the need to maintain those funds, because if they do, we have this problem that you pointed out of having declining surfaces that require much more money to repair than if we can maintain them at their current state if they're in fairly good condition. So we've dealt with this for many years, it's not going to go away. While the state's looking at a $20 billion deficit, they're going to continue to look for, anywhere they can for funds. So I'm interested in the board's pleasure here. The request is to accept the pre-report and to send a resolution of encouraging the state not to take our transportation dollars.
Well, I, Mr. Chair, I'm obviously very, much in favor of making sure that we do keep whatever transportation monies we do have here, because we do have road issues. We are always working on it, and we're so blessed to have Measure R, which enables us to do a lot more than what we would have had we not passed that sales tax measure. But, you know, I, I think this is a very important presentation to see, to show that Tulare County is not the only county in this state with road issues. In fact, we are slightly better than state average, and it also demonstrates that there still is work to, that needs to be done, and that we're all aware of it, and we're going to be continuing to work towards whatever we can to, to make this road network better here in our county.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr.
It isn't all doom and gloom. It's only mostly doom and gloom for us out, that live on county roads. But over the next five years, we have scheduled $100 million a year for construction of road projects within Tulare County. And a large part of that $500 million, if the state doesn't pull the funding, is a result of Measure R. So I think that reinforces how important Measure R was to the county.
And I think, just to add to that, Mr. Sheed, because you might say, well, $500 million, how are we getting $500 million? It's the ability for us to leverage those dollars. And a good example is a project we have down in District 5 on, on that Highway 190, where I believe it's four times?
Four million and getting 18 back.
Yeah, so we're investing $4 million of Measure R. Caltrans is putting up then $18 million to do a shoulder project, which will be a very safe, very needed project to widen that particular road. And that's what we've been very successful with. I have to, my hat, my hats off to our TCAG staff of their ability to take these state, these, these local funds and marry them with larger funds from federal and state dollars that allow us to get so much more done. And, and without that And, and without that Measure R, we just wouldn't be on, we wouldn't be able to start. We would just get zero. So it's been a very successful program, and we look forward to, to it continuing in the future. But obviously, we can do more with less. We can't do something with nothing, and here we need to be sure to protect those state dollars, because that's what we're, that's what we're marrying with our, with our local dollars, and if we lose those, then we lose a lot. So, yes.
Just one quick comment. Wholeheartedly support doing this. I wonder if we ought to take Senator Ashburn's style and print it on a big cardboard box and send it in that way so that they actually notice it when it comes up there, because everyone's going to be adopting the same resolution. We just need to make our stand. I always laugh when he says that, but it always makes me think in the back of my mind, how do we, how do we send something up that goes on to the, you know, three-foot-tall pile of resolutions that they get that'll make them notice it? So I don't know how we, we become creative if we hand-deliver or what, but, you know, I just, I'm very supportive of this, but we need to really make sure that it gets noticed.
I was thinking about our dairy industry, but that's probably not a good connection.
Well, and also, we need to take that notion out of their mind that take the sales tax end of it out and put an excise tax into it so that they can get their hands on it much quicker.
Yeah, that's not revenue neutral either. Okay.
If, is there another comment? I'll turn to motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. And a second motion by Mr. Ennis, second by Mr. Ashida. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you very much. That concludes our general session. We have items in closed session, Council.
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman, and if you would allow me to share just a moment today. To the day is my 29th anniversary with the county of Tulare. I'm in my 30th year now, which is unbelievable to me.
Congratulations to you.
Well, congratulations or commiserations, depending on the day, maybe. Item B is off agenda. Other than that, we have Items A through J. I do not anticipate, oh, wait, I'm sorry. I do anticipate an announcement.
Good, thank you.
Where were you, Pete, the chairman?
Please don't.
Wasn't even a thought, Mike.
It was a glimmer in someone's eye.
Michelle?
Baby?
Walk.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
All right.
I can't give you a, you suggested some revisions. So what I did is I, I looked at those and.
Can they decide, make a decision outside of the committee? For the Jgrana?
Yes.
So we can see what's going to change.[772.11]
Announcement out of closed session. It's not on. Announcement out of closed session. There we go. Announcement out of closed session today, Tuesday, February 9th by Kathleen Bales-Lang, County Council, and Jean Rousseau, County Administrative Officer, in the matter of Item I, Consideration of Appointment, the Board acted to appoint an Interim Director of Child Support Services on motion of Supervisor Ennis, seconded by Supervisor Cox, on a unanimous vote.
What was the...
I'll tell you in a minute. E is the other item that we need to announce out. In regard to Item E, which is entitled AE versus County of Tulare et al., the Board voted to authorize a defense and a defense of individual employee defendants with the reservation of rights on motion of Supervisor Ennis, seconded by Supervisor Ashida, on a unanimous vote.